Because there's no moderator for it, there's no profile picture, there's no information on the city. So I just put it on my website, city website, and used all the same information.
But it's not as new. You good?
Not surviving, that's all I've got today.
Animals are bad?
Holding.
You got animals or other?
The animals?
It's okay, we need to come in with a little space.
Yeah, thought it might be a...
Did you see that a lot?
I need his phone number.
Alright, so, want me to get started?
Yes ma'am.
Alright, so, we are here to review the capital improvement plans project with the goal of getting to the point where you all have all your questions answered and are able to, feel like you're ready to pass this. So, it was recommended by our wise city council, excuse me, our wise Rita too.
Our wise Rita?
Our wise Rita, because, you know, we're in a process where with new council members, we're moving to the budget where everything goes, what it looks like to make these expenditures, where they're coming, you know, what buckets of money they're coming out of. So, she recommended that we address the most urgent needs right now, and we've had conversations about this, and I know each of us have had conversations about this as well. So, everything you see on here are the recommendations of what we would want to consider to pass through April, May, and then we'll revisit some of these projects in the spring when we, especially the department heads, having a panel on the viability of some of them even, you know, coming to the table. So, just, I know that I've gone over this with most of y'all, but does anyone have any questions as you look over this? One thing that could be a little confusing is that on the back page, what Rita, City Clerk attempted to do is show the different funds that will be paying for the total amount. And one question I had is, I don't, is this number, the fifty-two, five thousand two hundred thirty-one, eight oh one, is that this number? Or that, okay, so we don't really have a spot where it's totaled up?
So, I can ask, the, I think when we first looked at this, there was, we have this available, to do all of it would be this, to make up the difference would be reserve. What were those again? So, whatever that, what we have available without going into the reserve, what is that number? It was like one something, one nine or two nine?
I can go grab one ahead last time, I did not recalculate anything.
Okay, because then I have to lean in, my second question is, although we're looking at some stuff now, and then looking at the other later, is that under the idea that we're going to try to fund it all and touch reserves? Or is that under the idea of not going to the reserves? Because that's kind of two different routes. Does that make sense?
And it would depend, my first calling of this is to give you all more time to really become familiar with what's being deployed. And, which I heard similar what the mayor says, I was going to grab, check the packet, but, you know, I just felt there were some items that place cars and things like that, if you get too far behind on, it's going to be really difficult. So, she's trying to come up with items like the carryover man, as you see, but the total amount, that's from, that is, that is from the reserve, that's what she said there. And then the alcohol money is from last year's, I'm sorry, is budgeted for this year, the capital fund is, you know, that's separate money. So, really, the only thing that you're making a decision on to not to fund is just the two hundred fifty-nine thousand out of the general fund, and then the three hundred twenty-two thousand, the grant commitments, that's really, you might say, new funding.
What about the swimming pool, we need to get on that, right?
Yeah.
Next, next one.
Do we have one of them?
Yeah.
Let's carry over, but now there's, we've got to add some to it, right?
Yeah, it went from two thirty-five to now two eighty-four.
Everything that's included in the carryover is, is in reserve.
I have one other question. Whatever happened to our vehicles we're leasing, how did that go? We didn't lease, we bought it or whatever.
We're still on that contract, but it's going to be looked at, that's a couple weeks, I think at the first of the year.
We're not getting police cars through that program?
They didn't have them available, and I don't, at that time, we did not have police cars available.
Well, for Lake County, what I've been hanging up with that was the wear and tear, because the police patrol unit, wear and tear is different than a, every other vehicle.
Right.
So I don't know if that's what the hangup was for.
Yeah, I was just making sure that's not where we were getting, and are we able to get, find those police cars? I mean, do we know where somewhere?
I believe so, I think it was under the state business.
And we're ordering the fire, I mean, the garbage truck?
The garbage truck is still on order, it's supposed to deliver in January.
It's for the carryover.
Carryover, there's not another one on this new budget?
No, we have another one there.
What about the other piece of heavy equipment?
Tobacco?
Yes.
Uh, that, that, if we don't, that process will only get through the end of this month.
Okay, so is that included in this?
Yes, it is included.
Okay, what's the price not at, at this month?
I don't know, they didn't give me that price, and they just said that price is good through the end of the year.
Okay, is that the Tahatu that we bought before?
It's John Muir.
John Muir, okay, Tragrin?
No, it's through Warrior Equipment.
Okay.
But I know, just to speak to the police cars, he's already got a plan in place for that, he already has, he's getting them not from the typical distributor, he's got them from Montgomery, but somewhere different, and he already has it lined up for that.
Fords or Civvies or whatever he can get, Corces?
I don't know that.
Mercedes?
Yeah, Mercedes. When he comes up, we should ask him, but I know he's done his due diligence on that, and he's found a cheaper route to get that, and a faster route to get that done.
Okay, what are we leaving off? How about I do that? On orange.
Yeah, go ahead please. On the first page, the cemetery paving repairs, and I did ask Jim, he's okay, we're putting that off for a few months. Then under the, well, if you look, anything that's not marked, Chuck, in the heavy orange?
Yeah.
Those are the things that's kind of on hold, and Ben has spoken about a lot of his projects, but we're just trying to look at what we pretty much know we have to commit to, what's going to be paid within the first six months.
So, can we look at the downtown flood mitigation real quick?
Sure.
The project we started, how long ago did we clear that?
Long ago, here in Groveton.
Yeah, I, so, I personally don't like kicking that one down the camp, down the road again, because as he said, we're going to have to log the place again if we don't get on that at some point, so.
Is that the harder downtown flood?
Yeah, the downtown flood mitigation pitch.
We would be able to utilize the plumber that we've already done, so it would just be a little bit of engineering and just the construction is all that it would take.
Council President Gill's concern is that we had already spent money or some money that, to clear the land, and are we going to be, are we already back in that position where we're starting over with having to do the clearing? Or can we, if we wait, is that going to create even more of a?
We could, I mean, I think at this point, you're going to have to, Herschel's going to have to go at it for a while, if that's something we want to do, or if we want to add that to the bid. I don't think that six months is going to make a difference.
We can go in and clear, clear what's there now and reverse.
Do we have one of those pieces of equipment that basically chops all that stuff up?
We do not, the utilities have one that they might, or we could probably find somebody to do that at a fairly good cost.
Once we cleared that lot off, I just didn't like it growing back up, because I feel like if that was individual, we'd probably send a code enforcement officer to their house. And I just don't think it's a good look, so I'd like to at least mow that off again, and not let it grow back up if we could do it.
I had mentioned that, and I was told that we couldn't touch it, but it was never explained to me.
Do what?
I was told, because we questioned that, and I was told at the time by people higher than me, that something to do with the grant, we couldn't touch it.
We can't touch it?
Yeah, but I, but we're, I think we're past that.
I think that's expired.
Yeah, that expires.
Can we put signs that say wildlife reserve?
Squirrel training here? I'm not upset, I just, I, every time I drive by, I'm like...
We don't want it to grow back up into big trees.
Big trees, yeah.
Well, how about we note that we want to prioritize this, and we'll revisit it in April, May?
Absolutely. Right when it's getting rainy?
Right.
Now, granted, I don't know what all is covered under that, we might have to get a, pay them permit to do any work on there, so that, that might be a cost for whatever the MPD has permitted us.
To mow it?
To, if we, if we go in with a tractor and start digging stuff up, we'll have to have an MPD has permission. If we just grind it somehow, then we don't have to have a permit.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You want to ask the chief about it, the chief now about it, please?
You got a source for police cars?
Do I have a source?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, good.
Supposedly.
I was worried, because, you know, we had trouble getting them.
Well...
He wanted to know if they were Mercedes.
Yeah. In, in the past, obviously with COVID, yeah, but I, I was told that the vehicles themselves are the same price.
Yeah.
I haven't got an updated list, but he said, yeah, the price that can change, and I go, you gotta be kidding, because all the equipments went up.
Yeah. Sweet.
It's the Ford Explorer in the same place, they got the state vehicle.
Are they like hybrids now still?
No, those hybrids, we...
Remember when they didn't have anything else?
Well, the hybrids are actually more than the others.
Yeah.
And then two, if you let that vehicle sit for three days, the battery goes dead in it, and...
But they have another option now?
Yes.
Okay, sweet. That's what we didn't get, Fords, I thought.
Well, there are Fords.
Well, they went to all hybrid.
Well, they, they went to the hybrids, I think, because they were short, because of parts and stuff.
Awesome. Did they hold up as well as the Chevrolets?
The Fords have way less problems than Chevrolet.
Really?
Yes.
Ford tried to kill me one time, I tried to stay out of it.
They got, they have now, and pretty much always have had, the police vehicles, so I'm not worried.
All pretty safe. Any else on those pages?
Y'all have any other concerns about those first two pages?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, like, he didn't like you pissed off. Each individual thing obviously makes sense, but I feel like, whatever number you gave us last time, one point nine, say that, alright?
Don't it come in out of reserve?
No.
If we want to?
At one point, not available.
Available and the rest?
And then the rest will come out of reserve. So if we say yes to whatever is here tonight, what's coming from where? And that's what these totals are on the last page.
On the back sheet, like I said, that state capital is its own separate fund, we can only use that for certain items. Alcohol is only for, we have equipment tagged for, for that, those items that... The carryover, of course, like I said, is from, is already there. So really, all that's coming out of the current budget, the general fund is what's in purple and the grant commitments. And really, the majority of the things that we're holding off on are the, the grant commitments that most likely will not occur during this even fiscal year, but certainly not the first six months. And then, of course, that large item, the downtown flood, I did not include that to be funded.
So, doing this, we're going to revisit, what month, what meeting?
April.
April, and then we get a better idea of where we're at as far as tax collections.
And also the grant, the feasibility of some of these grants coming through.
Yeah.
So, on the, let's see, then, under engineering, the tap grant, construction page one, and then engineering page one add, is there, do these go in order, how they listed, is one go kind of before the other, or are we, why do one and not the other?
That was just added, let's see, yeah, I just added the add underneath it, that's the redesign of that, moving the project from all the work happening on Bethel Street to down Bethel Road effects. If we want to, if y'all want to invest that money to redesign it, to change, because that's already a funded grant, and to be able to utilize that money, we would have to pay more money to be able to utilize it in a different way, so to speak.
So Ben, explain to the new council people that there are, there's basically, anytime we have a road project, there's four phases. There's the, you see it on here, there's the R and W, which is that right-of-way acquisition, there's the PE, or can you go through those four phases?
Preliminary engineering, right-of-way, so, the preliminary engineering is where you're doing the design of the, the project, right-of-way, if there's any right-of-way acquisition that has to be required, construction, and then CE and I, which is the engineering inspection that happens throughout the construction, so.
So that's what you see, when you see one kind of...
Yeah, he told us last time, that's why I was asking why we're picking one after leaving one blank, it was my question, because the way you explained last time, one kind of feeds off the others, how they were listed, so, but that makes sense, because it's an additional change for a different area, and that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Which gym floor?
Front.
Front front gym?
Like, replacing it?
So, the price on here is to do it exactly the same as the back gym. The same forwarding and everything.
My only question on that would be, do we need to make sure what we're doing on the event center before we?
Well, let's give it a hundred opportunities.
It does give volleyball?
Yeah, it adds, so basically, redoing the front gym like the back gym, we will be able to have three volleyball courts going on at the same time, or two big courts.
I feel like right now, for Saturday, if they were fine volleyball, they're in the back gym all day, back to back to back to back.
Because we can't, that's the only gym we have, yeah.
I did, I did go by the, the night I drove, the new parking lot, and I saw the sidewalk, and it was nice. Big improvement, now that my kids no longer play soccer sometimes. Someone will enjoy it.
Well, you know, that was the plan all along.
So, is the soccer field top grading and mowing somewhere out there, because didn't they just go in there to sand it all?
Oh, you know, last year, we did that to the bottom, so they go in and phrase mow it, get all the grass off, then they go in and dump like tons and tons of sand out there.
We didn't do it on top though?
No, because...
Because we're putting in irrigation?
Yes, we had to wait for the irrigation to go in.
I got you.
So, that, that's all that is, is now we're at the point now to where to do the top, to make it a better playing surface, better maintained.
Is that going to get them done in time for soccer?
Yes, well, depending on this, I mean, they're, they're waiting on me to call them and say, hey, let's get started. Then after that's when the fence would go up.
And just let me say, I apologize for not attending that other sheet, but maybe you want a meeting again next Tuesday, so if you want to wait to study about this, I can go on next week, that's our...
I think we've made them wait long enough, would be my stance, they're over there dying to go get something done, and they're waiting on us, so I'd rather, I mean, y'all can do it, we can do whatever, everybody's suit, I just, I feel like we've pushed them off long enough.
If I can, I, I don't know where the UTV and the mowers are in this particular order, I, you know, what I'm going to say is, we've survived without them. Yes, they will be nice to have at some point, but if it helps this other stuff get going, we can put the UTVs and the two mowers on the back burner and revisit that at a later point day, or even for next year's budget. Okay, well, never mind, forget I said that.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah, okay. I was trying to help.
Yeah, Matt, I just went extra replay, that, just ignore what I said.
When do you need the mowers? When do you need them, when y'all start using them?
Again, that, that's not nothing I need right this second.
I'm saying like, in six months?
April. Yeah. I, I think we're pretty good on the price, because these are coming from Gravely, or Marty, unless they just go to a big price increase.
They're going to be on the state business?
Uh, when I talked to him about the mowers, you know, because we had that delay, Marty said, look, I'm, you're, you're pretty locked in at that price, that there would have to be some major changes with Gravely for that price to change.
So, while we're talking about mowers, have we revisited in real mowers?
The, I'm not saying we haven't.
That, that's the recommended mower of the turf company that we use, they would rather instead of a rotary mower...
Well, I can tell you what they're going to say too, we're going to have to go in and re, basically, what we're doing at soccer, do that on every field we got, because of the current, you know, yes, yes.
Now, I thought we did that on the softball field.
Not, not to this extent, no. We did on field two, for the high school fields, we didn't do it on the rest of them.
My opinion is this, this is not part of that new thing going on at Parkin Lake.
Can you say that loud enough?
The phase one, phase two, phase three, this is not part of that.
It's going to be more like some...
These are maintenance items.
Yeah.
David, you have the least orange on here, you feel good?
Yeah, but one of my three pieces is expensive. I was going to say, I probably got the most expensive piece of equipment on there, I think.
Ben's got the most, and David wants to spend the most money.
So, Ben, on the, you feel good on the Lando Kane, you know, the right-of-way utility, that's fine, and the CE and I and the construction, like, timing's fine on...
Yeah, as far as, best case scenario, though, we're thinking like, what did we say, like, late next year? It's, we're not going to get to those phases, definitely by April, so, we'll, we'll be able to revisit it whenever we meet next time to make sure that they're going through negotiations of right-of-way right now, so it's, it's going to do well.
Some of the conversations we've had about temporary solutions at that intersection, those will, that are not part of this, they'll have to be considered separately, because if, you know, it's, if this doesn't happen and that doesn't happen, then you probably won't move in that direction.
Does anybody see anything on here they're just not comfortable with? Y'all, y'all think you're to a point we can move on? Are we going to, are we going to leave the utility vehicles in the whole town there?
Wait, what?
I resent that.
Sparkman Park brand standard.
This is really just for information only, I want you all to know that there's no vote needed on this, but this was already approved by the previous council. This is the brand identity that's going to be associated with Sparkman Park. The master plan included rebranding the park as its own identity, and the consultants were advising us against having different, you know, the softball complex, and then the baseball complex, and then the pool complex, all with different names and different, you know, spots on the Google Maps, that we're trying to consolidate all of that, instead of this fluid branding all throughout the park. The first document is the full branding, and then the second, it has to do with the, you know, this is what you would give a printer, and so, oh, I backed up, excuse me, I got that wrong. First one, yeah, the first, the smaller one is what we would give a signage person, and so, we have two packages that are going to go to bid in January. One is the signage package, and that's what all this branding is going to be useful for. So, obviously, I guess Chuck, I don't know if you were involved in any of those conversations or Virginia, but...
I don't remember that.
Okay, well...
This looks like Walmart's logo. It's not really, it looks like Walmart's logo, I, I mean, is it, how final are we on this, because...
It looks to me great.
Well, I, there, there was a lot of thought that went into it.
I'm not seeing it. Can you tell me what, I didn't know, they can tell me. Well, it looks like bullets, isn't that the sun?
I was restraining from, you know, I'm not trying to sell y'all on this, but here's, here's what went into this, and Thomas, feel free to contribute, but the idea is that here is a, if you look at it here, this is supposed to represent a spark, and that, you know, it's movement and energy, and, and that's what the park, what, that's what happens at Sparkman Park, is that it sparks vitality and life, and so...
A bit of traction.
And so, you know, it would be posters like this around the civic center, and that that standalone brand would be memorable...
Let me ask this.
Identifying.
What if you don't like it?
I mean, we can go back to them and, and ask for them to go back to the drawing board if we want to, but it's going to be a big delay, and so you really need to have a lot of heartburn over it, in my opinion.
Just think it's swing and a miss, but...
I think, for example, like, times like that, I'd rather, I think, in a small town, be in a community where we care about, obviously, if people come into our town in the future to play tournaments, you know, be with their families, are we taking stock images? And where I can just hit on Google, or it's, I mean, at the end of the day, it's not Harkville or Harkville versus, like, that, that picture, I can go on Google and say, that's Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, that's New York, that's Mexico, versus like, this is Harkville, Alabama, this is a picture from like...
Well, that's kind of a micro decision, but the, the bigger decision is that we're getting ready to go to bed in January for multiple branding pieces, signage, like, a big sign to go with the aquatic center, a big sign to go on Sparkman Civic Center, multiple signs to go throughout the park, and we have to have some kind of branding standards to do that. And so, this is what the previous administration spent many hours on coming to this conclusion, and they approved this, and so, my intention tonight is to bring it to you all so that you know it, these are the colors that are going to be used, this is the font that's going to be used, these are some samples of what the signage will look like, these are not meant to be the actual signage, but just what it would look like in concept.
No, I like a brand book, I like to color it a fine with, it's just the icon just seems not much to it, not, not much here to it, you know, I could, I could came up with an S with the blue stream going through it or something, I don't know. But, you know, we're even, we've already canceled one thing this year, and I will not cancel.
I defer to you all, if, if you feel strongly enough about it, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board, but I've been familiar with these processes, and it will mean a three to six month delay, and so, it, but, you know, I'm willing to engage in that delay, it's just, if you all would like to do that.
Thomas, what do you think?
Before you answer, they had to go through this process, so I assume that created several, and we looked, like, we see the others?
I don't know, so, when all this started, they, we sat down and talked, they actually did some surveys throughout the community, and this is what was brought back, basically, this right here, with a different, and like I said, I'm sure, I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't paying attention, but... And like I said, I'm sure, I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't paying attention, but so take away the outside of it, the inside is supposed to be a spark for Sparkman Park. Now, there was another version of it and I expressed my opinion on it very strongly that I wasn't a fan of that one. This was, the one we have now is kind of a compromise out of the ones that were presented. You know, I do, like she said, if we go back to them and say, hey, you know, we don't like this now, it is gonna delay even further what we're trying to get done and it's just gonna put it that much further behind. So...
And delays are worth it if...
Well, I just like, if you lay them on the table and everybody says, eh, that's not a good reaction, like in this room.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I just, I mean, being involved in these types of projects before is kind of how you always land because, you know, there's, there's just so many compromises that you have to make in order to come up with something that is one dimensional and that goes, that can be used in a multi variety of ways and that has a, you know, has a feel to it that is memorable or meaningful and, um, and, you know, sometimes you get it and sometimes you don't, but, um, you know.
I will say, in the probably thirty years I've been going to ballparks all around the south and everywhere, that's definitely, definitely unique.
I'm gonna look at a logo, so that's what I said, we're after analyzing my data. Well, if you really wanna be an artistic person, you know, you're gonna stare for ten minutes, you can see, or is that again? I mean, you see a, I see a, I see a sunshine. I do see a spark. Maybe we have some yellow in there because at least yellow signifies light and I get it, I mean, definition of water moving.
Yeah.
Money moves, water moves, life moves. I understand like that, back and forth, right? The biggest thing I think is like having that sunshine and we're gonna be this spark. There's gotta be some yellow in there that comes down to.
Well, and that, I mean, that's still, I mean, as far as like that, that stuff that could be took back to them and say, hey, look, this is what, you know, instead of just applying colored yellow logo, this is...
And we, we did, you know, there was conversation about where the city's logo fits in and it was unanimous or the council was not to use the city's logo, that this needs to be a standalone, um, facility. Uh, we would use the logo very sparsely just to recognize that it is a city property, but that this is a diversion.
I think I question that though, because like, let's say we go down to sports tourism, right? We bring everybody here, we kinda wanna adhere them to Hartsfield, so shouldn't Hartsfield show up somewhere?
Yeah, and I don't have all the pictures that we looked at.
Sparkman's not on the map, so...
It does, doesn't it? Yeah. So I just defer to y'all. I mean, if you wanna reengage them in this process, we'll do it. Um, but before we do, we probably...
You don't get delayed three to six months for a logo branding, that's just...
Yep, I mean, some of this, sadly, you know, this is the, this is the byproduct of elections and inheriting projects that were started by previous administrations and we do have the liberty to revisit it if you all want to do that, but we just have to weigh out the pros and cons and one of the major cons is a loss of time.
I mean, let's get moving and let's keep the show on the road. This is my damn end of the day.
And I do believe that these are, these are professional people that did, I saw he had multiple folders with multiple files and this was not done by...
Did he leave the wrong one?
What?
Did he leave the wrong one?
Sorry. Um, Chuck, I'm deferring to you because I guess it would be up to you to whether or not you wanna call for a cancellation on this.
I don't wanna delay it three to six months. I was just looking up some logos of some parks I admire and is this the logo? Like, is this what's on the sign? Yeah, I think it'll... But I'm saying like, there's Sparkman Park obviously on the signs going in, but would this just be a standalone, this is what stands for Sparkman Park? Like Bill Noble has Bill Noble Park and a baseball diamond and flags and a circle on the top and it's like it's, Bill Noble is built into the logo.
Yeah, it's...
That's the same thing of just like the spark, the spark, it's the, I mean, you know, it's Sparkman Park.
Yeah, if it's together, I don't care about the sunshine thing, but sunshine thing by itself just doesn't resonate.
Like this, so there, there is, they're trying to figure out exactly where to put it. There is plans to have like a entrance like Bill Noble and all that does with the flags and all of that.
But on the flag, is it just the little circling thing or is it the circling thing with Sparkman Park?
The Sparkman Park branding will be very loud and clear on that, the kind of a stone arch thing with several flags, including a Hartsfield flag and a, you know, U.S. flag and then probably some of these spark flags like we see back here too, like that.
So all the signs that say concessions, restrooms are gonna have the spark? Or they're gonna have the word Sparkman Park? They're not just gonna have the spark?
Uh, I think, I mean, some of them would just say concessions and it might include that little spark logo on there.
I feel like we need to give it the nickname now for...
Sparky.
You know, Sparkman was a man, not necessarily a spark. So I feel like now we can just call it old Sparky or something.
People are just like, that's all of them. I think it's great. I love it.
I'm not calling through to cancel it. It is what it is at this point. Um, but if somebody else wants to make a motion, y'all can...
Well, like, we have some saying where the thing shows up, like, they're saying, hey, we're gonna add this here and it's like, eh, let's not put the spark so much, let's put the Sparkman Park. Is somebody over that or they just roll in one day?
Our council agenda tonight is for our council president to call for some council members to serve as... Park, you know, just sort of like we did with Ms. Alexander, Mr. Baker to serve on library council.
Okay, sometimes at library, Billy, I said no, so I don't know what they...
So, anyway, I wanna make sure we inspired that conversation. Is everybody...
So is this on the agenda or not to bring the brands, it's not...
No, no, no. All of this was approved. I don't know exactly in what kind of motion. I don't know that it was a specific approval of the branding package, but I know it built in somehow. This was covered in some approval that the previous council approved. So...
I think it was like early on in all of this process, because it had to be approved before they actually started working on all this stuff.
Yeah.
So...
So I don't know if it's part of a larger multi approval or if it was its own individual approval.
It was the contract with this company to develop.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
And that's the brand they developed.
That's cool.
So the people appointed can have a conversation with them and see what the actual delay would be.
Yeah.
All right, number three.
All right. Next thing, just, you'll notice here, the landscaping guidelines and this is gonna go to the, um, the planning committee commission. Again... This was approved as a part of the park master plan. And again, I think it was the same type of approval that we approved for a landscape architect to put together a, not only a plan for the park, but also to create some landscape guidelines that are intended to, um, help educate and inspire other projects within our city to adhere to these same guidelines. None of this is enforceable, but when, you know, what we're asking is for the planning commission to review these. We're gonna go to that planning commission on January sixth for recommendation to the council and you all will vote to adopt these guidelines. And if they're adopted, then they will be owned by Jeremy and Ben to be distributed throughout the community when, tell me at what stage...
It's usually site plans for commercial multifamily developments, things like that. If it was planning commission, we'd have all that require our plantings. No Bradford areas.
Yes. So that's kind of what this is. This is meant to kind of leak into the rest of the community and, you know, and as the consultant says, okay, we'll look like Hilton Head because all the plants will be the same and, you know.
Right. I like palm trees and nice, like tropical...
And I've been telling everybody, surprisingly, but there's no crape myrtles in there either.
The, uh, we, we met with Mr. Lackey the other day and went over part of this and, uh, all right, this, we went through tree by tree almost and like it's stuff you'd want. So I'm kinda excited about it, you know? Especially if you take this and then look at the landscaping plan for Sparkman Park, it even makes more sense, so...
And then this will go, you know, again, we could distribute this throughout the whole community and give it to Carolyn with the municipal education association. She can do contests, so how many people have at least fifteen of these plants in their yard or, I don't know, whatever, but it's just meant to be a beautification effort and...
I've got three crape myrtles.
You win. So this is more just for information. We will, this will come before the council for a vote at the first meeting in January. All right, then now, this...
Number four.
Yeah. Then number four.
I, Missy and I had discussed this, um, and y'all were on the other project already. I didn't know if you would be interested in the park or not. I know I am and Mike is, and so I guess my question, are you interested in working on the park or is that something you're not as interested in?
I know I can help work on the park, but if you want to, you can do, I mean, if it's like a passion for you.
It's my passion.
I didn't wanna take something from you.
I would like to do it. All right. You're okay with that?
I'm okay.
All right. Alston or the mayor, the graphics and the projects.
Yeah, it's just like keep it brief for y'all. Uh, you know, we've been working on building it, right? Um, so really, we basically benchmarked on a lot of construction, management delivery, talking about kind of like the fees, figuring out things, multiple options on kind of if we wanted to save the CMA, CME, or if we wanted to kind of do it more in-house, um, kind of work with the architect, of course, but really the initial steps right now are figuring out, you know, thirty thousand square foot per se lottery, twenty thousand square feet would be basically the basis of a casual ground, thirty thousand feet. So it'd be a second floor, of course, in some areas. Obviously, we're not the architect, so we'd have to go talk to architects to go what we're gonna do really. Uh, but looking at municipalities across north and central Alabama, uh, kind of, and who have used construction management, um, you know, consultants per se, uh, what those fees are, who they've used, who they've worked with on the architect side of things, what firms they've worked with, uh, and kind of really looking at how we can really cost control this project, obviously, in the best value of people who are dedicated and specifically focused on doing civic, library, municipal buildings, um, and without just saying, hey, we're a, you know, we're a big time architect, we're a big time consultant that works in multiple industries. We wanna focus on who's into those industries specifically. So we've got a list together across north of Alabama, central Alabama, that I've sent to Missy, Rita, um, and Virginia and also share with Ben. And I think our biggest next step really is to kind of, kind of do a little bit more research into those, uh, talk to the municipal leaders and figure out kind of who are maybe three or four that we really wanna go talk to and invite internally, so. Anything else that I missed or...
Um, I'm gonna add to what you said, just some more things that happened since we met, but this is, um, so the first thing that we're trying to decide about is whether or not we're gonna approach this project with the same traditional, or call it, I mean, you know, this design, bid, build approach, which is what we did with the fire station, or do we want to go with what some groups are soliciting us to consider, which is the CME, CMA? We're not a hundred percent sure what that even covers. We gotta, uh, this is the scope of service that the same group, Gang Day, who was doing the park, presented us to serve us as an owner's representative in this process. Um, to put it in their words, they would come alongside of us like a staff person and help to reduce costs by reviewing plans and, um, you know, working alongside of Ben to just help identify ways to cut out waste. Um, they would, they would help us make selections of architects and just several other things as you can see their long list here. We talked to Larry today and just got his input about the legality of this. His response is that the only thing, because one of, one of the things they're proposing here is that we sort of phase out the project and, um, that way we can determine if there's ways to, you know, save and, you know, with, you know, find cost savings ways to approach different things. And Larry says, as long as we bid everything out, then we'll, we'll stay legal. So Ben is gonna do two things. One, he's collecting a list of architects that, you know, getting recommendations from different contractors in our area, builders in our area, um, and he's putting together a list of architects. Also, he is going to go through this scope of work and identify the things that he thinks are really value added. Um, and then that way we can be a little better about trying to compare the services that different people are coming to us and saying they can provide. Um, one of the things that Rita and Larry and Ben and I all walked into that conversation thinking that we need to try to do the best we can to make sure that people are being, are giving us flat rate quotes and not percentages of the product, of the project. So Ben, do you wanna add anything else to kind of where we are on this?
No, just kind of really early stages of it, just trying to determine if it's a good method. See if it's a good method on going that route or not.
It always should be, I mean, on average pricing, for people who don't understand the background bit, on average, it's like three to five percent of the entire project is what you're paying for. Um, kind of, we had some discussion internally about like even like, I think we reached on two percent and I've talked to a couple of firms and say, hey, if we were to do 1.5, 2 percent, would you just like put less hours in or how would that work if we did hourly? And most of them, of course, they, it's not worth their time, they're not gonna do it, they're gonna walk away. So we're at risk of losing a top firm on that, but total values of any project above four to five million dollars on average nationwide ends up saving, saving, you end up actually coming in the green on it. Uh, if it's below three, four million dollars, of course, then you run the risk of losing money on that or just, you know, kind of breaking even. So I envision based on, you know, what our plan is and what the discussions have been, that it is fruitful for us and I would confidently say that we will come out saving more money than what we would be spending on that person or on that organization to work with.
So there's other Dean Days out there.
Yeah, we've already been approached by at least one other. We haven't even gone towards...
Do you have to bid that service out to pick between them or you would just get the...
And we would do that, we would make sure, it's, yeah, definitely. And, and, you know, some of our conversations, we just don't, like, this sounds really good to have the help, but we don't wanna end up paying twice, like paying for an architect to be an expert, plus paying for this owner's representative to provide expert services and services. Right?
Is that not what the construction manager...
Well, that's a kind of a gap they would be filling is this owner's representative would be holding the construction manager accountable and, you know, Ben is now with a fire station, you know, he's got an obligation as our owner's representative to go on site to regularly inspecting, bringing Tommy and Josh in to regularly inspect and that's, you know, he's not an expert necessarily.
Construction energy was supposed to do that.
Yeah, but they're not necessarily our owner's rep, so there's still that liability that we have to make sure that they're doing it right and...
And doesn't follow their insurance and license?
What do you have to say about that?
Who are you speaking to?
I'm talking about if we hired a construction manager to oversee the project. Like, we've been approached by several people that wanted to be a construction manager.
Or just owner's representative.
Yeah, it's the same.
Right, it's the same deal, right?
Yeah, same deal.
Same deal, just the ones that have approached us have a construction license, and Game Day?
Yeah, they, we would be approaching them as well as, we would have to create a scope of services. We'd approach, there's a lot of contractors that do this work as well, that we would be getting proposals from to do the same thing that Game Day has proposed.
Got you, okay.
I want to catch all of where we are in that, so, that's really it.
Sports facilities advisory.
Well, do you want to speak to that, anything that you think the council would want to know? Chuck and Mike were both in the call that we had with them yesterday about their services and.
Professionally, I like the thought of what they talked about as far as managing, basically outsourcing almost. It was a great idea, I don't know how it goes into practice. I'm still struggling with that a little bit, like, ownership of assets, I know they said that we still own the assets, but do we? I don't know.
And what you're talking about is if we dove to the full, deep end, but there's, there's the one-foot waiting pool all the way to the twelve-foot deep end of relationship that we can establish with them.
Right, and it's been a long day, I can't really remember the first part of the put your foot in the water.
The thing that y'all, I mean, was concerned.
Optimization plan, so basically, they come, they spend time from alongside us, see what it could be, but they also do cross-the-country market analysis of what our park, how it compares, how it rates, you know, compared to like-sized entities, as well as, you know, what opportunities are out there, you know, basically. If we have to go to the whole tournaments, what kind of pool of tournaments, travel space do we go in, and where could we pull from? So, to me, I see value in that. With that, it comes with, you eventually get to a fork in the road where there's, we stay how we are and they work alongside us if we want. Or the more shock to the system, you know, shift is we then turn over those operation pieces to them. It's still running Sparkman Park, it's still the Hartzell City, but it wouldn't be our guy. They would hire the people, because they work for them, and they work in our place. So, with that, that's a huge shift from anything we're used to, so that comes with an initial. But a lot of people are doing it, so there's some reason for them to do it. But the ultimate goal, sounds awesome, how realistic is it? But you really don't know, they build that optimization plan over a sixty-day, eight-week, twelve-week period, where at the end it says, if you do it this way, it looks like this, if you do it this way, it looks like this, or we just walk away.
What's that, they tell you what the cost of doing all that is?
Yes, yeah, so.
And when you say cost, I mean, they, you basically have a payroll account, you deposit money into, they're W2ing it.
Well, that's if you go down.
Full in.
Yeah, so for the plan, it's like twenty-five thousand, or something like that.
Twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, a month for the, for that initial period.
First two months.
The problem, though, so, this is the, put your thinking caps on, and you're going to dig in and listen and figure out a lot, because there's a lot to it, and it's a big shift. However, what I struggle with is, and no offense to Thomas, because you're the only guy over there right now, we're investing four to six million dollars in Sparkman Park, we don't know if, when we can keep the pool open. See the disconnect there, like, we're investing these dollars, how do we know we can run it how it should be run, right? That's, that's what you're playing with, you know, if we can do it, and I have faith in Thomas, but you got to have people hiring harder, what we pay is different, and so it comes with some almost instant, the things that y'all have been dealing with for however long, right? So, it's, that's what you have to decide, so that's, I mean, fairly accurate.
And I think that we all walked away with a lot of enthusiasm about at least doing the, you know, starting the relationship to get that optimization plan back, where they're going to provide us with, here's what we think you ought to do in order to position yourself the best, and that would even go to answering some questions that we're even lingering about how much of an investment we make in this master plan, too. Do we go towards turf, do we not, do we, how many pickleball courts do we want, or do we not, you know? That kind of thing, that they'll, they'll help us have real data to be able to make those decisions, and I think that's attractive. And then along the way, they'll help us know what it looks like to do, you know, for them to help us with the staffing issues.
So, and so, initially, my kind of thought was, lots of good knowledge in that plan. Like, at the end of sixty days, we can give Thomas a book of, like, broad information that can aid him in whatever he does, right? Not really a bad thing. Or it may open all our eyes to something else, but, you know, if you were asking me today, I feel confident in pursuing the plan, like, getting, because there's stuff we don't know, they talk about key before, KPIs, key performance indexes, about.
Benchmarks.
Benchmarks, and like, stuff that, I mean, how businesses are run.
Right.
But that's about as far as I'm going to go right now, if that makes sense, you know, after that, it'd be a deep dive, and.
They just give us details on like, how old, and they say we're going to come out there for sixty days, are they coming out there on Tuesday for an hour, check the box, and they're going to go drive back to Birmingham?
No, this, they have three major components, I can't remember what they are, but they have teams, I mean, they do five hundred, seven hundred parks across the country. But they have optimization team, which then pulls from the planning team, the whatever team, and the whatever team. So, they come out in teams and spend at different periods, like, throughout that time, they're here a lot, if that makes sense, to build that plan, so, because they got to learn it first.
Is there a time that we recommend, for example, like, Hartzell's quiet in the winter months at any other park it is, versus summertime, you can see how a fully operational park it is, so it's almost like showing your car, showing your torn your house in the summertime versus showing your house in the winter?
They're making most of their, they're making most of their decisions on the data we give them. Like, what, you know, month to month, what do our concessions look like, and what can we serve?
We already have that data, is what I'm.
Yeah, and then really, it's all driven about, if they go and stand there, what should that facility, if it was anywhere else, what are they able to do with a light facility, so it's built like forward-looking, so they don't really need to see it busy. They just look at what the facility is capable of.
Providing the circumstances.
Have you checked in with the?
References?
References, yeah. I would, I will say, they deal with what I would call the premier parks in North Alabama, so you're talking about Bill Noble Hoover, Sand Mountain.
That's what I do, I do feel like there's some.
Legit.
Yeah, but like, this kind of, they were, could be some field trips, and going to meet with them, walk us through your park, you know, what do they handle good, you know, one thing I heard was, you know, we don't want people, like, we want the full-blown route, which is, again, it's a big sweep, you know, we don't want people wearing CFS shirts, we want people wearing Hartzell City shirts, you know, those kind of little things, make sure that that is what it is, because they really should, it's like when you go to Marriott, that's not, it's the Marriott brand, but everyone in the kitchen may be somebody else, but they, they all look like Marriott, so.
So, they are on call to do a question and answer session at the next council meeting, if you all are wanting, you know, to ask them all of those questions, and I took notes, and I'll send those to y'all also, if you can read over those at any time, but just read over those contracts, because I don't have a few of my questions when you came in.
But on the call, the big question to try and answer is, do we use the plan or not? Could that be the first step?
Well, I think that we can engage, yes, yes, but we can engage without having to commit to anything more than just an engagement, and at least an eight-to-twelve week.
I do, I do think there's some value in, I hate to always, anytime rushing anything, but since we do have a park that upgraded coming, I think there's some value in before everything's bid out, and looking at it and say, hey, you might, you might think about adding this here or that there, before we get completely done, just as a second set of eyes, too, that would, that would be included in the fifty-two, as far as I thought he said.
Yeah, because they would look at what we're currently.
They really wanted that.
And that might be what we think was great, but based on their knowledge in the thirteen parks that have something similar, they may say, well, really, I'll do this, and so.
All right, well, it's thirteen, so, take a break, and we'll just. Are they just quick?
Are they just quick?
Yeah, I mean, he can do that between pitches.
Yeah, I mean, the first one, Sparkman Park, or, let's see, Sparkman Street Grant Project, that one is just signed a preliminary engineering agreement to redesign that project, to get rid of that acceleration lane. That's the, let's see, the amount should be on that spreadsheet, what they've proposed on that, so. And then, the second one, just making sure that that is the route y'all want to go to do sidewalks down Bethel Road. That amount is to engineer the entire stretch, we may want to phase it out, it's just, if y'all want to phase it out, we can, we can do that, so.
Both of those show on the spreadsheet as additional.
Yes, that's, that's the PE addition, that's what both of those are, listed as additional.
So, they would be, the project itself would be approved if we vote for this capital treatment plan tonight, but it would be authorizing me to sign the documents to formalize it.
Yeah, for that, for that type project, that is one that if you don't want to do it, all of, all the items related to Phase One Bethel Street would be removed. If we decided that's not a project we want to pursue, we do have a million-dollar grant out currently, that is approved, so we could, we would lose out on the eight hundred thousand, but we are having to spend money to do it, so you might say that's not worth it.
Get that grant, though?
Do what?
We're getting granted it, Sam?
Yeah, we are, we are approved, it's just we're redesigning it to move it somewhere else, because that project is being.
You're talking about typically, I would say you're talking about bringing it, right, well, that would be, like, your.
We were going to run, we were going to run it down, and that's kind of small, you have to run it down, but it's your multi-use pad all the way down. So, instead of doing that, we're just running it, it's proposed now, to just run that. So, I can make it, I'll, I'll bring it up, you know, actually, and y'all have to decide.